Call the meeting to order and I've spoken with all of you. Bob's present, Brenda's present, Anna is present, Katie is present, as is Larry. Larry has a conflict at seven o'clock. And so he may bow out, but as long as we have a quorum here, we're in good shape. Would everyone please rise and join us as we say the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Okay, we need, we need an approval of the agenda as shown. We would look for a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion.
Larry on the motion.
I'll second, this is Anna.
Anna on the second, thank you. Yes, what would be for the approval of the agenda? Bob, yes. Brenda? Anna?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Brenda, you here yet?
Nope, not quite yet. She's still working on it.
Okay. Still passes by a four zero vote. Schedule presenters, Tim Hodges is going to speak to us from middle, middle school, high school updates. Mr. Hodges.
Good evening, everyone. Jeff, if you could just hit present. There you go. So I thought tonight for as far as a report goes, I try to be as visual as I can and show you some pictures of things that are going on, but then talk about mainly just what's been happening this year with some COVID things. So Jeff, if you could go to that next slide, please. Before we get started with that, though, this is something that I show to staff every year. We have been using this as our, this is our, our student achievement improvement model that we've been using for several years now. You can see in the four corners, there are, those are the four main areas where we try to focus our staff development and we try to focus our improvements as far as educator effectiveness goes. All of those things kind of worked together to, to develop, you know, high level learning for our students. So through our, through our professional development, through constantly reviewing our curriculum and standards alignment to focusing on literacy in the building, using data from our MCA assessments and our fast bridge assessments to some of the changes that we've been slowly introducing with some grading and reporting using School Agene, Infinity Campus, and then changing some of those grading practices and then looking, running a lot of this through our PLC process and our multi-tiered systems of support improvement process. All of those things are working together to get us the student achievement that we want. The nice thing about this plan is it really does encapsulate everything that we're doing as far as making improvements. And so a great thing about this plan is the only thing I have to change on it every year pretty much is just the, the year dates. So Jeff, if you could move on to the next slide, please.
Yep.
So one of the big things, probably the biggest change that we made this year besides splitting classes up into cohorts is going from our seven period schedule to a block schedule. So if you're not familiar with a block schedule, basically we call our days red day and black day. Mondays and Wednesdays are red days and Tuesdays and Thursdays are black days. And so kids have four different classes on each of those days. So they don't have the same class on a red day and a black day. They rotate. So, so essentially what we did was by, by going to that block schedule, we went from a seven period day to an eight period day. But it's spread out over the course of two days. Each block is 95 minutes long. And you know, there are some major reasons why we decided to go with a block schedule for this year. Number one is I think we found last spring when we tried to do any type of synchronous distance learning, it was really difficult because kids had seven periods that they had to deal with in one day. That's a lot of zooming. It's a lot of changes in zooming and, and those are when we started to see technology problems when we started doing that. So the block schedule provides an easier way for us to provide that synchronous instruction. So our kids that are home distance learning and our kids who are in school learners are getting the same material on the same day. And and they're able to, to stay in line with each other. You know, the, one of the great ideas behind this, or I shouldn't say it's a great idea, but the idea behind this was that we could have students moving in and out of our distance learning and our in-school learning seamlessly without losing any instructional time and without having any major problems. That was one of the major reasons why we went to that block schedule. Another benefit of the block schedule is with the, with dealing with distance learners and in-school learners, you know, in the middle school, high school, over half of every class pretty much is our distance learners in a day. It provides the teachers with some extra preparation time every day. So teachers have a 95 minute block of preparation time every day. That's really helping them get all of these kinds of things together. The distance learning, although we know that that's a challenge for teachers, I think that I can't emphasize enough how much of a challenge that is for teachers to be able to deal with distance learners and kids in class at the same time, just the management of the technology is the challenge, but then thinking about, okay, how do I create a lesson that is going to work for kids at home and work for kids in school? So that prep time really helps our teachers out with that. The other thing is in the, in our, in our COVID planning is how can we, the question was how can we reduce the amount of time that kids are kind of together in, in a, in a non socially distanced place. And we knew that passing time was going to be a huge problem with that. So it minimizes the impact of passing time on every day because you, instead of passing between seven classes, you're only passing between four classes. So those, that's kind of the, the block schedule's been a big deal. It's not easy. Typically, schools take about a year of time to plan between going from a regular seven period schedule to a block schedule. So our staff has been able to really do that quickly and they, and, and kudos to them for being able to, to make all that work. Wanted to show next, Jeff, if you can move on to some pictures that kind of show what things are, how things are different. So these are pictures of the cafeteria and the atrium right now. For those of you who haven't been in the building, we've got tables spread out from the tray drop off window all the way almost down to the double doors going out to the field house, kind of gathering area there. So we've got tables spread all over the place. Right now, we've got two kids per table and that's just what we had to do with our hybrid, one of the, at the beginning of the year. The guidance said that if we're in the hybrid model, we had to have kids separated six feet apart for social distancing and that kind of led to this setup. So kudos to Dave and his, his custodial staff for helping get that ready to go. That's been one of the major changes. We've got actually, I didn't show this, but we've got dots on the floor from where kids go into the kitchen area to pick up their food all the way down to the middle school hallway, all the way around those pillars that you see in that picture on the left. Spread out six, six feet apart for social distancing. Our kids are doing a really great job of doing that for us. So we really appreciate them listening to what we're, we're asking to do there. Another big change, if you've been around the building at all, is there's a whole lot of signs that talk about all this stuff all over the place. So kudos to Reed and Athan and to Dave and his crew about figuring out a way when we added volleyball in-person spectators for volleyball, figuring out a process to get fans in and out of the gym. The entrance only sign is, is an example of that. We've got designated entrance doorways and designated exit doorways for that. We also have that for, for our kids. So in the past, our student body has come in by the door down by the field house and by the weight room. And that is now an exit only door for this year, just so we can minimize the number of kids who are coming in and out of the same area. Most of the doors have the big red sign there to say, wear a mask, social distance, wash hands. We've got those all over the place. And the little round circle, please sit here. That's an example of what's on our, our, our tables in our cafeteria now. So we've marked those spots so kids know where to be so they can be socially distanced. If you want to go ahead. Some changes to classrooms. So this is Mrs. Herneke's art classroom. And these are the new tables that were provided by the Ed Foundation in last year's, it seems like forever ago, but it was just last year in their big donation to the school district to replace furniture at the high school, middle school. So these art room tables were kind of the very end of that. So I just want to say thank you very much to the Ed Foundation for your donation. The art room looks great, looks better than it ever has before. Mrs. Herneke is really happy with the tables. They provide plenty of space, especially for one student right now, because right now we can only have one student at a table, but they will provide plenty of space for kids when we get back to more of a normal schedule. So this is a kind of an example. These, the tables are spread so that there's six feet between benches. So kids are socially distanced in the classroom and we're making things work out that way in most of our classrooms. So it's not been too much of a problem. And we've never really had this before, but we've got, this is two of the four tables that we've got in our vestibule for materials pickup for kids who are either, if their cohort is a distance learning on a particular day or for our distance learners to pick materials up. So it's been working really great. So the vestibule is open from six o'clock in the morning to nine o'clock at night. We put whatever, teachers put whatever kids need to pick up for materials out there with their names on them. It's been, it's been a remarkably smooth process for us to be able to have things set up this way. So that's a major difference before that stuff was sitting in our office if we needed to get things home. So this has been kind of a nice change and it's working out really well. So as far as the cohorts go, you've probably heard me talk about this. I just thought I'd give you our most up-to-date cohort numbers. So cohort one is our kids with last names A through K. We currently have 275 students in that cohort. Cohort two, last names L through Z has 276 students in it. You might think that I planned that out really nicely, but this is just a happenstance that on this particular day, when I pulled these numbers that they were that close because at one time the cohorts were significantly different in size by about 12 or 13 students. But they've kind of evened out over time. We've got 34 students currently who are coming every day. Those are, would be either students who are receiving some more intensive special ed services, English language services or, or 504 type services that, and kids that have those plans that aren't successful distance learning for whatever reason. So we've got about 34 kids coming every day. And currently we've got about 97 students who are full-time distance learners. So that number has pretty close to doubled since we started school at the beginning of September. Go and move on for me. So just a couple of other updates that I wanted to talk a little bit about as far as technology goes. Our building is completely on Chromebooks right now. We started the year of getting those out to, to students. And we had some hiccups at the beginning, beginning of the year, but things have settled down very much with our Chromebooks. We're not seeing as many Chromebooks needing to go in for repairs right now. So kudos to our tech staff for being able to take care of that. You know, when you think about it, we've got two people, tech support people, Sandy Sherrett and Dorothy O'Reilly, who manage not only all of the individual Chromebooks for students. So we're talking pretty close to 1,200 devices in that, that are either iPads or Chromebooks. But then all of our paras and all of our teachers also have devices plus any other type of technology as far as things like keeping the website up to date, managing our, our screens to display information to students in classes. They're doing a great job. And given the fact that there are only two of them doing that, I, you know, you just can't give them enough kudos for, for the work that they do. Staff computers in the middle school, high school are in their last year of service. We're going to be making, hopefully making a purchase of new devices for our staff for next year. We've seen some issues with some distance learning complications as far as things not working great. But the nice thing is our staff are, have been pretty they've done a really nice job of figuring out how to make everything work. So we provided staff with, at the middle school, high school with an iPad at the beginning of the year. And I think most, I'd say most staff probably are using both of those devices on a daily basis to, to help out with that distance learning thing. So they might have their staff computer maybe displaying something to the whole, to the whole classroom and to those who are, are watching the Zoom. But I think they're, a large portion of them are now using their iPad to actually communicate with kids just because sound has seemed to be a little bit better with those devices. So you know, it, it is pretty amazing when you consider that just a few months ago, our teachers were teaching pretty traditionally with kids coming into a classroom and they've been able to really put the brakes on that. They come up with a whole new way of doing business in just a few short months without a ton of time to prepare. So I can't, you know, it, it's amazing to think that it's what, seven or eight months ago when this all started and we're really doing business, the business of education very differently now than, than we were just last year. Um, you know, I, I can't ever thank the board enough for continuing to support our PLC process. Our PLCs are really what lead all of the change that we do in school. We've got, we've got PLC facilitators in both buildings. They end up being our, basically our building leadership teams and we're able to push out everything through that PLC process. And again, the PLC process is a huge piece of that, of that building improvement plan that I showed you at the beginning of the show. Our, our high school math teachers got new math textbooks this summer. So we had new textbooks in algebra one, algebra two, geometry, and pre-calculus. I think our staff are pretty happy with that. That those, those textbooks were in pretty rough shape. They were purchased, the ones that had been used up through last year were purchased in my second year. So that was really nine years ago and, and textbooks. Nine years in the hands of students can do a lot of damage to textbooks. So they needed those. They're in pretty bad shape and, and they're pretty happy with things. One big curriculum thing that's coming up in the near future is the science standards are changing in the state of Minnesota. Our science PLC has been working on those standards and working on implementing new standards already. So I feel very comfortable that by the time those roll around next year, that they'll be ready to go with those new standards. Jeff, if you can move on for me. And just a couple of things, you know, I don't think we, we shoot our own horns well enough or often enough as we should. But I just got, have two areas of recognition that I wanted to bring to your attention. This kind of came out right around when COVID hit last spring and I don't remember whether we really talked about it very much, but US News and World Report ranked Cannon Falls Secondary School as the number 29 high school in Minnesota last year. So I'm really happy with that. There are 400 and some high schools and to be ranked in the, in the top 30, I think is, is pretty remarkable. If you go on the US News and World Report website and look at those rankings and look at the schools that we're up there with, I think you'll be pretty impressed. So you know, our staff are doing an amazing job and our students are awesome to work with. So I think those two things in and of themselves help a ton with student achievement, but they also bring this about. So so thank you to everybody who, who has been working hard to make this and, and congratulations, I think to Cannon Falls, to you, the board for supporting us and the staff and students for, you know, for making Cannon Falls High School a great place to be. Another recognition that we just received in the last month or so was this greatschools.org is a website where you can go on and rate school districts. And we were notified a few weeks ago that we received, we're one of 60 schools in Minnesota to receive a college success award. So this little graphic there shows you kind of why we received that. One of the things that I'm really happy about when I look at this graphic is that second number, graduates needing remediation in college. The fact that we're pretty significantly below the state average in that, I think is a really good thing. Remediation when kids go to college is money that comes directly out of parents and students' pockets. And it doesn't go for anything. It doesn't get them any credits. All it does is bring them up to a standard that the college feels that the kids need to be at before they can start earning college credit. So Cannon Falls High School is doing a really good job of preparing students who are, are looking at going into college and keeping kids out of those remediation classes that you don't get any scholarships for. You don't get any money for those. They're just money out of your pocket. That doesn't really go anywhere. So that's really all I've got for you for tonight. Again, you know, this has been a weird year. It's been a weird year for everybody and I, I keep trying to say this to staff all the time is nobody's ever been through this before and everybody's trying to figure this stuff out right now. And all we can really do is try to support each other and help each other. And I'm, I, I you know, I'm really happy when we have staff meetings. Our staff meeting in October, I thought was going to be about 20 minutes long and we ended up spending about 45 minutes talking just about what was working well in our, in our distance learning, in our hybrid and distance and in-person learning in classes. So staff are doing a great job of helping out each other. And it's all going to the benefit of our students. So if you have any questions, I'll certainly take any of those right now.
I have a question.
Yep.
I'm just wondering if you'd consider what you, how you feel the block schedule is going and if you'd consider continuing that in, in the future coming up or, or how you think that, that might change things for you.
How the block schedule is going largely depends on who you talk to. So there are some staff that love it. Mrs. Herneke loves the block schedule because kids have a lot of time to work on a project and to, you know, be able to really get some significant progress done in class. There are some classes where it's much more difficult. I think, you know, music classes in, in particular are ones where it's pretty difficult to play an instrument for 95 minutes. And I know for personal experience that singing for 95 minutes probably isn't a great idea either. It's just really difficult to do. So it's a little all over the place. You know, one of the things that I think a lot of people comment on is just how calm the building feels because we're not passing between classes every 15 minutes, you know? We've only got really four passing times during the day. And, and it would be very different if we had all of our students back in the building too, but the building has a really different feel right now. As far as whether we continue this or not, you know, one of the reasons why schools don't use a block schedule is it tends to be kind of an expensive schedule to run. And part of that is because of the amount of prep time that teachers get. So we, we did this particular block model so that teachers got a, a full block of prep every day. But that ends up being kind of expensive because it's, it's about twice as much prep time as teachers typically get would get if we were doing our, our seven period model. So the other challenge to, to block schedule two is there is a, a credit issue with this in the high school because kids are taking four, or excuse me, taking eight classes instead of seven. So the kids who are, are doing that this year, if we go back to the seven period schedule, they're going to end up with an extra credit beyond what kids normally would get. So typically the max number of credits you can get in high school in Cannon Falls is 28 credits. These kids, these freshmen, I should say, or I guess all of them will have the opportunity to earn 29 if they, they didn't take any study halls during any of this time. So so personally, I, I like the block schedule. The question is just, you know, with, with funding and things, whether we can afford to run it. It's been a real help. I, I will say this, I think it has been a real help, especially this year with COVID and, and part of it, like I said before, the reason that we did the block was so that we could move seamlessly between the, the three different learning scenarios. I, you know, I said this at our COVID advisory committee meeting last Thursday or last Friday, I should say. I feel pretty confident that because of the way we've been running our block and, and our cohorts, that if we needed to go to distance learning tomorrow, our teachers would be able to make that change right away. And a lot of it has to do with the box schedule.
No, we should make a comment and not pass up that US News and thegreatschools.org. We've long thought of ourselves as a quality education school. And when we get our test scores back, they're always very positive. But here's just one more in the mix. We were on US News and World Record five years ago with the same type of outcome. So it's been very consistent over the last several years and thanks to the educators, the administrators and fellow school board members, we're doing a great job as a team and it shows up. So congratulations to all of you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or statements on the middle school, high school update? It is a discussion item, so we will move down from there. Thanks for your time, Tim.
You bet. Thank you.
Report.
Just give you an update here. Brenda is now in the meeting. So.
Hello.
Hi Brenda. Update, our next communication and report comes from Crescent as the student school board rep. Crescent?
Hi.
Hi.
So this report's kind of short today because there's not too much going on in the school. But Math League had their first meet on Monday and they got 34 points, which is really good because normally they average about 20 points. And then football, one Friday against Stewartville and their next game is Thursday against Pem. And it will be their last official season game and they are undefeated. So go them. And then volleyball lost Thursday to the, can you want, not can you, Cassin Manorville Comets. But they have another game tonight at 7:15 against Goodhue. So go bombers.
That's it for you?
Yep.
Crescent, thanks very much. School board committee reports, does anyone, has anyone met as a committee member and would, they'd like to share what's going on with their particular committee?
Technology and curriculum both met last week, but I think looking at the reports, Mr. Hodges will cover what we went over in those committees.
Anyone else? Next is our administrative board reports, elementary school. Ms. Chapeau, do you have anything for us?
Um, I didn't get time to attach anything. It's been a crazy couple of weeks. But I did just want to say that October was fire prevention month and we, just a shout out to the local fire department. You know, typically we have a big school-wide assembly and, and all of that, but this year we were able to get out a number of vehicles, fire vehicles, ambulance, and we took the kids out in small groups to see a presentation from each of those. And so that was awesome as usual. But aside from that, nothing else to report, aside from a shout out to the staff, custodial crew, teaching staff, para staff, cafeteria staff, I'm secretarial staff. We're still building that plane while it's in the air and it's pretty impressive. So and also a shout out, the teacher of the year for the elementary that was selected is Lori Jackson. Well deserved. And also a shout out to the middle school, high school staff, Jamie Miller. So very well deserved on that part. And I'm sure you'll see that official release, but exciting for them. That's all I have.
Okay, moving along, middle school, high school tech report. Some of your information is already on here, Tim, but would you like to add to it?
Um, no, not too much to that. I can, I can talk to those two committees though, if you want me to do that right now, or if you'd rather, I mean, wait, I can do that.
No, let's, let's hear it.
Okay. So as, as far as the tech committee and the curriculum committee both met last week, both were just kind of updates on, on some things that were carried over from the year before. So Um, both were just kind of updates on on some things that it were carried over from the year before. So. And technology was just kind of more of a review of of where we're at and and looking at what types of. Um, if there was any major expenditures coming up this year, and I don't think there really are, other than. Um, the replacement of the middle school, high school teachers' devices, uh, that's gonna end up being a a costly item. Um, other than that, there's no big um internet updates or anything like that that we have to do. We've got our screens in all of our classrooms, so. Uh, we're pretty well set for that. Uh, we've been dealing, as far as technology goes, we've been dealing with some. Um, just challenges as far as making our technology work well for our distance learners at home. So, you know, making sure that. Uh, teachers can be heard in their classroom as far as their microphones go. Um, and uh, that everything is working out well. So we've taken care of those little challenges uh as they've come along. Um, as far as the curriculum committee, uh, again, it was more, we reviewed the new curriculum cycle that was approved last year. Or curriculum adoption cycle that was approved last year. Uh, talked a little bit about um, the. High school textbook adoption and then um, we're looking forward to the curricular areas that'll be under review for the school year. Which are, uh, I believe, if I remember right, it was elementary and middle school social studies are the two. Review areas for uh for twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
Questions for Tim? Okay, um, community ed and activities department, you see a handout uh that's in your packet. From Reed, Reed's at the volleyball game. Manning that at this time. So if you have any questions or concerns with Reed. You know, you can uh run through the process and make some contact with him if you have questions there. It's nice to get a synopsis at CE. We haven't had that for a while. Head of operations, uh, same with Dave. He's part of the handout that you received and uh. Uh, he's commenting on the bipolar ionization. That's completed both at both locations. Staff continues with daily building and cleaning and disinfecting. And also talks about winter prep for the facilities. So again, any questions for Dave? Uh, please direct them through uh admin and uh get your questions answered. Superintendent's report.
Jeff. You, um, one of the comments that was uh asked last meeting was to give an update on the COVID advisory committee and. I can certainly uh provide that for you guys tonight. Our uh COVID advisory committee uh has been meeting weekly since the committee was approved. Um, I believe back in August. And we've been looking at data. Initially, we looked a lot at our county data and that is still one of the data points that we look at. But our uh Department of Education for the state of Minnesota has asked us to start drilling down into more localized data. Meaning the the school district itself and also within our buildings and what is going on and providing updates. On that, uh, currently, as most of you know, or hopefully would know. Um, the data in the county is rising pretty significantly right now. Um. And we've had uh long discussions about that during the the COVID advisory committee. Normally, our committee meetings take anywhere from a half hour to forty-five minutes. Uh, the one last Friday was a little bit more in-depth. Uh, it took about an hour and a half uh for that meeting where we went. Uh, full circle uh around many different discussions in regards to data and a direction to head. Um, part of the process in what we do with these, especially more recently, is to have consultations with. The Department of Health Epidemiologists, uh, Goodview County Health as well. And get recommendations from them and then take that back to the committee. Uh, we had uh ones the past couple of weeks with the Department of Health Epidemiologists. Um, we will probably look more at having another consult with that person again, along with Vicky Aoko. From uh Goodview County Health as well. Uh, to see if they can either join us for a meeting on Friday or if they can uh prior to that to look at where our data is headed. Um. Part of the discussion last week was acknowledging that, yes, the the data is rising at a pretty significant rate. As far as case counts within the county. Um, but also had discussion around that our uh school data is still really low, especially in comparison to. Uh, other schools around us. Now, that could probably be due to a a bunch of variables, I guess. One of them being lock, uh, two of them being mitigation factors uh within the school. And so. Um, I I'd like to say that we sometimes make our own luck by some of the strategies that we use. Uh, as we go through this, which I think is helpful. Um, but in the end, uh, our numbers are pretty low. Um, one of the communications that I sent out. Uh, a week ago, this past Friday, the families was centered around. Um, kind of giving an update on where we are at as a district and. We talked a lot about the change from an in-person elementary and hybrid schedule in the high school to a hybrid. A complete hybrid schedule in the elementary and in the high school. And that was due to the rising key counts as a uh preventative measure. Last week, in our committee, we had a discussion about whether we needed to. Change that again to hybrid in the elementary and distance and learn distance in the middle school, high school. Uh, in the consultation with Goodview County and the epidemiologist, they said that the hybrid model that we are currently in is appropriate. Uh, especially considering the numbers within our uh buildings and we'll get to that in just a second. Um, and that prompted quite a bit of discussion within the COVID advisory committee, but uh in the end, we landed on. Looking at the data for this coming week as well as we continue forward. Um, to see if a change would be needed near the end of this week as well. Um, in looking at, whoops. Looking at our data. As part of that letter that I sent out about a week and a half ago, we talked about a new COVID dashboard. And uh, in an attempt to be more transparent about the data within the school buildings. We looked at um, the total number of employees and students that we have in Cannon Falls area schools. And at the time of last Friday. Um, we had two confirmed cases. Of employees and one confirmed case of a student. And I believe the numbers as of today, and they won't change until this week Friday, because we change the data every Friday. As of right now, we're at. Four staff confirmed and still one student confirmed. And so this will be, this page will be updated on our COVID website. Every Friday after our COVID advisory committee meeting and give the latest updates uh to people in the community. Um. As I mentioned before, we will probably have another consult with our local epidemiologist that is supporting this area of the state. And also Goodview County, um, in another couple of days, I'm guessing. If we can get ahold of them to get a meeting scheduled uh to look at our data where it is at. Uh, then we are strictly on a day-by-day basis here because we know that the numbers are rising. Uh, but then again, M M D E and talking to the assistant commissioner last Friday. She also felt that we are on the correct path of what we're doing by looking at building-wide data. Um, she understands that the numbers are rising, not only here, but throughout the state, but the. M D E does want us to prioritize in-person learning as much as possible, simply because. Of the social emotional effects of students, um, that if we have that taken away from them. That could cause some harm to them in the social emotional learning areas. But we also have to balance that against the safety of students and staff as well. So there's quite a bit of variables that we do take a look at and not everybody's going to agree on that COVID advisory committee. But we do come up with a team decision on that.
How many, how many members do you have on that advisory committee?
I believe we have eighteen, if I were, my count remembers correctly. We've had um, a pretty consistent agreement uh for all the weeks up until last week and there was some, some. You know, differing opinions last week, but in the end, um, I I think it's just kind of like a board meeting. You can disagree. And then when you vote, you need to come out supporting that decision. And with the agreements after the discussions that were made, and not everybody was in agreement in the last week's discussion. And it's, it's good dis- good discussion. We want to be data-based and we want to have. Uh, students and staff at the heart of the discussion as well and what's best for all of them. So. Question?
Questions for Jeff?
If we're looking at specifically at school-wide data, is there a threshold? Where we would, where you're anticipating that we would go to distance learning?
Um, there isn't a specific number and I don't even know if Goodview County or the epidemiologist would give you a specific number. Uh, even without throwing local other, other schools under the bus. One of the superintendent says, you will know when it's time to go and a lot of it has to do in focus around staffing. If you can keep up um by keeping staff in school to have kids. If you don't have. Teachers and you don't have kids, you you can't have school, obviously. Um, I know their local school has had over ten staff cases. And I think upwards of fifteen, if I remember correctly, student cases. And they're still in school, you know, with with the idea of making sure that they're prioritizing. Um, local learning, but every situation is different. I don't think you can put a number on it at this point.
I guess my, my concern is that we're giving, if if we feel like it. A change might be happening, that we're giving families as much lead time as possible. Um, simply because there's, there's a lot of families that don't have the flexibility to meet having their students at home. So I just want to make sure that we're. Not announcing it after a committee meeting on Friday that, starting Monday, we're gonna go to distance learning. I know Hastings is moving to distance learning after Thanksgiving, so they're giving their, their families. Two and a half weeks to prepare. Part of the. So I just just want to make sure that that's something that's, that's being considered.
Yeah, it's being considered. Um, the letter that went out about a week and a half ago. Um, started letting parents know that they need to start having a plan ready because it it's coming at some point. A lot of the discussion last Friday was around the possibility of moving toward distance. And what does that timeline look like? And we actually had a couple of different scenarios for that and to lay that out. So we are aware that we do need to get that out to parents as soon as possible uh from that aspect.
Yeah, I think it's one thing to tell them to prepare to have a plan, but until there's a sense of urgency behind it, that might not be happening.
Yep.
Other questions or uh statements for Jeff on his COVID update? Thank you. Public input. Due to data privacy concerns, the speaker may not address criticism toward an individual district employee during public input. Essentially, does anyone have anything that they would like to discuss? To the board, you have three to five minutes and your discussion item, otherwise we'll move forward. Okay, moving down to action items. We have no old business. Under new business, consideration to approve the staff development plan and budget policy four twenty-five.
This is a, a yearly item and we do have a staff development committee that puts a lot of effort and time into. Creating the staff development plan and the budget that goes into it. And so this would be for nineteen twenty and twenty twenty-one. I'm not sure if any of the staff development committee members are on here. Currently, um. But in, this is the second year in having them work on this and there's a a ton of time and energy put into the staff development plan that will. Um, hopefully mirror the, the goals of the district and the uh strategic planning to help us implement this. And provide support for teachers and staff uh to to help meet those goals, especially in the academic areas.
I didn't get to make their last meeting. Um, but I got the notes and everything and I wa- I would reiterate that, that there's a lot of time and effort put into this. And a lot of, um, a lot of like really good thoughts that go into giving our teachers the best. Um, extras that we can give them to um develop their skills. So, so I'm, I just, you know, wanted to put that in there that. I will agree with that.
You're supportive of the, of the plan as shown here. Is what you're saying, right? Okay, I don't believe I've ever seen the uh inclusive budget in all my years that uh has been provided to us, so. Thank you for that. Any other discussion? I would look for a motion. With a staff development plan and budget, which includes the staff development policy.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Katie, on the motion, a second? A second?
I was trying to second them, but I was pushing the wrong keyboard button.
Okay, Brenda on the second, further discussion. Four twenty-five, Larry?
Yes.
Katie, Anna?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Bob, yes. That passes by a five-zero vote. Consideration to prove the final twenty twenty-one winterhead and assistant coach roster, I guess you'd say. Any uh, any input here? Our AD isn't in tonight, so. Would anyone speak to that? Looks.
I, I think it was just the two addition of the, the boys junior high basketball coaches and I think there was a couple of um. Girls' basketball positions that were still needing to be filled, but there's still a little bit of time before they begin because obviously. They are beginning later this year.
So it isn't actually the final, it's the uh amended version with the two updates for the boys' basketball.
Yep.
Okay. Motion for approval?
I'll make the motion.
Larry?
I'll second.
Katie?
Yep.
We have a motion to second on the floor. Any other discussion? A yes vote would be for the approval of the uh two assistant coaches. Bob, yes. Brenda?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
That passes by a five-zero vote. Consideration to prove the retirement request effective June fourth, twenty twenty-one.
This retirement is for Mark Waller. Uh, middle school, high school, uh, construction trades teacher. He's served a very long career here and we want to wish him well uh in his uh retirement.
Certainly, a, a difficult one. You got an alumnus who's also been a school teacher here his whole, his whole career. Very tough to see people like that go. Um, consideration to approve the retirement request. Motion?
I can make a motion.
Brenda on the motion. Second?
I'll second.
Second, Larry? Any other discussion? A yes vote would be to approve the retirement of Mark Walter. Bob, yes. Brenda?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Katie?
Yeah.
Larry?
Yes.
That passes by a five-zero vote. Consideration to approve a new high school course starting twenty-one, twenty-two. Computer science principal syllabus twenty-one, twenty-two. Consideration to approve a new high school course starting twenty one, twenty two, computer science principal syllabus twenty one, twenty two.
This item was brought through the curriculum committee this past week. And, and I believe Tim is still on here if he wants to talk to a little bit, but the committee was okay with moving this forward to the board for approval for this upcoming year and being added to the registration guide.
Yeah, it's computer science. In particular, this type of computer science is something that hasn't been taught really in Cannon Falls since I've been here. This is more of coding and and learning that piece of things with computers as opposed to, as opposed to using software and in creating things with software. So we have had a handful of students who have done a course like this or courses like this through independent study in the last few years. Mr. Riley Bukite, who is our ninth grade physical science teacher, approached me a few weeks ago about wanting to see whether this is something that we would be interested in doing. And we talked a little bit about it at the curriculum committee meeting last week and thought that it would be a good add to our high school course catalog.
Either committee member able to attend that curriculum meeting, put a stamp on this?
I wasn't, I wasn't able to attend that one, but I did get the notes afterwards and I do think it's a reasonable.
Addition.
Addition.
Yep. Okay.
Throw my support behind it as well.
Do we have a motion to approve the new high school course?
I'll make the motion. This is Anna.
Thank you, Anna. Second?
I'll second, Katie.
By Katie. Other discussion? Yes vote would be to approve the new high school course starting twenty one, twenty two called Computer Science Principles. Larry?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Bob, yes, that passes by a five zero vote.
Thank you.
Although we're, we're finished with our meeting this evening, we need to ratify the board results for the election that just happened last week. So that would be a special meeting that we would have at six PM via Zoom on the twelfth, this upcoming Thursday. Traditionally, these meetings last ten minutes max. We're just going to review, agree to the election results and move forward from there. If for some reason you can't make it, let us know because a quorum is absolutely necessary for this, once again, in and out in ten minutes' time. Take a look at the upcoming regular board meeting. We'll be busy at the next meeting. So among them would be a presentation with our new auditors and quite a bit of other information and material. So anybody else have anything in closing for the cause?
Brenda, I would just like to say thanks to the Ed Foundation for their event they had last Friday night, their poker social, that was downtown. And I guess they had a pretty good turnout. They had about seventy four hands sold and they were pleased with that and had a lot of donations. So it was a successful event and the first of possibly any annual type of thing they might be doing. So to the Ed Foundation for all their work they put into that.
Always nice to get new events for them. Okay. We need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
Anna on the motion. Larry on the second. Any other discussion? A yes vote would be for approval of adjournment. Larry?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Brenda? Bob, yes. We are officially adjourned. Thank you for coming. Good meeting.